A lot of them, a lot of the web-based ones don't for whatever reason. I don't know why. I don't know why, but a lot of the ones for different organizations.
You'll launch in a second and they'll take you all the way back to give them, so you can see me at the square.
Okay, it's one o'clock. Time for our regular scheduled meeting. It is July 2nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, do we have a call?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and rise for the pledge and indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for everything that you've given us. We thank you for the blessed rain that we received this weekend. Lord, we just ask that you continue to bless us, continue to protect us in this community. Lord, be with those who are out cutting, Lord, as it's harvest. Be with their families as they wait for them to come home. Lord, just be with all of us in this world. Be in our hearts and be in our minds. Be with us today as we go through the agenda, Lord. Help us to make decisions that are, that are in your favor. Lord, we just ask that you be with our families at home and be with all of us in this room. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
So next item will be the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which if no corrections are offered, shall stand approved. Were there any corrections?
Yep.
Stand approved. Item five, this is a time for public comment. If you wish to speak on anything on behalf of what's not on the agenda, please come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and we'll give you five minutes for those items. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. So, item six A.
Item six A, Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider a request from Magdalé Ambrose to waive the $100 park reservation fee for use of Stevens Park on Sunday, July 7th, for the Haitian festival event from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. Ceylan?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is, as Matt stated, a request to waive the $100 reservation fee for Stevens Park for Sunday, July 7th. The city currently charges for use of picnic shelter reservations, including Stevens Park. The base, based on that fee structure, it's $100 for Stevens Park. Other parks, Scout Park is 50, all other shelters are 25. So we bring this before you, the event coordinator asked for a waiver of that fee, and I don't believe anyone's here for that event, but we just bring that before you for your recommendation. Staff has no recommendation.
So is this festival open? Basically, anybody can attend this festival? Is that how I'm understanding it?
I believe so, yes.
So I would move that we waive the $100 reservation fee for Stevens Park.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item six B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Stacy Hahn, Western Kansas Community Foundation, to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have a banner placed at Third Street and Kansas Avenue from July 8th through the 15th, 2024, for a nonprofit fair at Stevens Park. Ceylan?
Mayor and Commissioners, so the next four, five items, I believe, are sign waivers or having to do with special events. Cory and I now handle the special events since August of last year, so we're just kind of following up, going through the process. This request is to have, to waive the sign ordinance and the right-of-way restrictions, as Matt stated. This was at Third Street and Kansas Avenue, the Friends and Frogs station or location. Their actual request is from the 8th through the 12th. However, our Parks Department are the ones that put these signs out, and they usually do that on Monday mornings, so that's why the memo differs a little bit from their request. We're just trying to make it to where it goes on the same days that our Parks groups can go out there and take care of the sign that's being put up and then the one that's coming down at the same time. This is similar to requests that have been made in the past, and I am here to answer any questions if you have any.
Mayor, move that we approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to place a banner at Third Street and Kansas Avenue from July 8th through 15th, 2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item six C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Steve Quakenbush, Finney County Museum, to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have a banner placed on the Lee Richardson Zoo West Fence and at the Fennett Park Gates from July 6th through the 14th for the Flea Market Festival event. Ceylan?
Again, this is very similar to the previous one. This is for the flea market that they have down behind the museum, and they would put their signs up, again, like it says, the West Zoo Fence, and then also at the gates, and that's from the 6th through the 14th. So those would be different locations than what the previous request was for. Again, staff has no recommendations. But here to answer any questions?
Mayor, I move to approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to place a banner on the Lee Richardson Zoo West Fence and at Fennett Park Gates from July 6th to July 14th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Thanks.
Six D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Jessica Coolman with Dirty Dough to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have signs placed at the following locations for a grand opening of their business from July 13th through the 20th, through the 20th, and there's 10 locations listed in the cover memo there. Ceylan?
Hello. So Dirty Dough, these would be the signs. These would be similar to the smaller, like Grogsdale, New Orangeville signs, and those are the different locations. The applicant didn't state that they would make sure that they got permission, obviously, from each business before they put those signs out, but those are the different locations they were requesting. Again, staff has no recommendations?
I do appreciate them asking. There was, earlier this year, there were some cars driving around with signs on top of their, of their cars, and I mean, I kept asking, well, who, who gave them permission to do this, or is this something that we normally do? But I really do appreciate them asking permission and then also that they're willing to check with businesses to make sure that's going to work for them.
I would, and I don't know what the stipulations are for little, you know, signs like this, but I don't mind either.
Right.
I mean, it kind of helps these businesses kind of get recognized on where they are, but
And launch.
if, if it continues with like sidewalk sales and things like that, that's where it might become kind of a nuisance of, of, so I mean, I suppose we just need to watch out for that. I don't mind new businesses opening up or going out of business type sales signs, but we probably need to watch what comes forth in the future. That's all I got.
Well, I think that's where one of the discussions we might want to have is this idea of like, you know, especially at the Friends and Frogs, which is a, it's a prime location. I mean, more traffic passes through there than, well, except on Mary Street when you're, it's the high schools in session. But, you know, I think that's where if it's a community event that really impacts everyone, more nonprofits or a community event, I see those as something that we should, would make sense, but, you know, for-profit, for-profit businesses, I mean, that might be something that we could discuss and see, is that something, you know, we want to continue? Because really, any for-profit business could actually ask to put, I mean, you know, you, you have a sidewalk sale or you have whatever, but if, if an event or a nonprofit is having something, or it's a community event, I can see that as a really unique opportunity that we, as the city, can provide. But if it's a business, then it's almost like we're promoting, promoting specific businesses. So I don't have a problem with this. I mean, the number of locations, I didn't drive, I'm not sure where they're all at. I drove on Kansas Avenue and tried to figure that out. It seems like a lot of signs, and I, I know the more signs you have sometimes, that really, all of a sudden, you just miss them because you see them so often, so.
At this time, there's a lot of campaign signs as well, so.
Right.
Some of them will get lost. Okay, do I hear a motion on that? I make the motion to approve the sign waiver for the ordinance of right-of-way restrictions to have signs placed at the following locations, 1 through 10, on this item.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I kind of agree with Commissioner Andrew. If we open this up for, for businesses, it's going to, it, it will probably have an effect where we're going to see a lot more of these taking place. That's my comment.
And my only thing is, this is a grand opening, and I mean, a new business having a really great start. I mean, so I mean, I have more inclination to do it for a grand opening, but I mean, just a standard, you know, Fourth of July sale or something like that. I mean, you know, these, yeah. So, and that's, that's the reason why I'm voting for this, in the sense that it's a grand opening in a kind of a once-in-a-lifetime or once-in-a-business time opening, so, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion pass for one.
Item six E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve, excuse me, event requests from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for Boo at the Zoo 2024. First, a request to close the zoo for the day of the event, October 19th. Second, request to allow Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo to charge an admission fee for Boo at the Zoo. And three, request to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to place a banner at Lee Richardson Zoo West Fence and North Fence close to the museum from September 19th through October 19th, 2024. Ceylan?
I also have Christine Owens, the director here, as well, for my backup. This is very similar to requests in the past for Boo at the Zoo closure, as Matt stated, and the charging fee and the waiving of the sign or sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions. However, I do want to add in the alternatives, that is not listed on the first alternative, but it would include the sign waiver as well, if you guys approve that. I don't know if anyone has any questions on this item, but these have been approved. Similar requests have been approved in the past.
This is a huge event. I mean, I've never seen so many people, so.
It's a good event, yeah.
May I move that we approve all three, all three of the requests as presented?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item six F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve requests from Tiffany Harmon on behalf of the Finney County Fair Board for the following. First, reduced rate for trash pickup of $20 per container. Second, permission to close Lake Avenue to through traffic from Ninth Street to Taylor Avenue for the safety of fair participants. Waiver of $300 daily carnival fee and $2,500 deposit. Waiver of the sign ordinance and place signs at the following locations. There's four locations listed there, all in conjunction with the Finney County Fair. Ceylan?
I also have representatives from the Finney County Fair in the audience, but as Matt stated, these are very similar to what has been done in the past. They did add the carnival back because I don't believe there was a carnival last year, so that one is a new one, but the waiver of the, they've asked for the waiver of the daily carnival fee and the deposit for that. If you have any questions on this one, I can answer them or you can have to answer them as well.
So I'd just be curious about, I know that there wasn't the opportunity for a carnival, so did it make a difference or from the year before? I just was curious about, not that I'd ride any of the rides anymore because they look too scary for me, but yeah.
Absolutely. No, there's a lot of confusion on that. So with COVID, the carnivals died, and so we lost our carnival. So in an attempt to kind of make up for not having carnival rides, we created the Community Carnival, which is just games. We're bringing in like mazes and big slides, and we have hauling axes, and we just have all sorts of games for the kids, touch of trucks, so we're calling that a community carnival, which we now have decided that that's kind of confusing in the names. We've had to put out PSAs. There's no rides in the fair this year, it's just games. But it is, it was a huge event last year. We had almost 2,000 people come through, and we're hoping to have more. We've added more games. We've added more vendors. A lot more food trucks are coming down, so hopefully that Saturday is, that's, that's what that would be.
And so that's the, is the Community Carnival is the one you were talking about the waiver for?
Yeah, so that was on there, and I think there was a
Okay, I thought it was like the big, the big rides or, yeah, okay, okay. No, this sounds really, it was really cool last year, and this, this sounds really neat also.
Mayor, move that we approve all the requests as listed. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item six G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve requests from Cody Kunde, Hidden Trail Brewery, for a waiver of the noise ordinance for two events for their summer concert series at 2010 East Schulman. The dates of the events are July 5th and July 13th, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Ceylan?
I have two more, and that's it. I promise. Okay. As Matt stated, this is a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance. So in code, it actually states that city manager is able to approve up until 11:00 p.m., and anything after that does need to come to the governing body for approval. And I believe you guys had a similar request for noise waiver at the last convention meeting. Again, this is for two nights, July 5th and July 13th. They would be on their back patio, which kind of faces the southeast sort of, so I don't know if Cody has anything to add, or if you guys have any questions from either of us.
How late are they going? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble getting this up to come up on my computer.
Till midnight.
Oh, okay.
I guess my question is, is the last request we had, that they had to follow, noise decibel limitation of 103 decibels, and I didn't see that anywhere on the memo on this one or anywhere on the application. Is that something that we're going to?
I believe that is what's in code, so.
Okay.
I just don't think that we put it in the memo this time.
Okay.
But that, that's in code, the decibel. I don't know exactly what the number is, but there's a decibel rating in code.
Well, I know that was, I know it was in the memo last time, and I was just, I didn't know if that was part of the, the, part of the memo in the request, so, that they need to follow.
And then like the second, the last question in that, or the last statement in that paragraph does state that if it still continues and it's still, the police department still receives complaints, they can still, police can still ask them to turn it down. The waiver doesn't necessarily permit them still getting, having to turn it down if it becomes an issue?
Mayor, move we approve the noise waiver requests as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item six H, the government, the governing body is asked to consider and approve requests from Matt Guyer, board president of the Tumbleweed Festival, Inc., for the 33rd Annual Tumbleweed Festival. First request is to you, the use of and the waiver of fees for the West Green at Lee Richardson Zoo on August 24th through 25th for the festival, and that also includes August 19th through 22nd for setup and August 26th through 27th for teardown. Second request is allowing volunteers to drive in the gates at no charge and closing the drive-in gates during the festival to maintain safe walking areas. Third request is waiver of code section 6-35 and 6-133 related to possession, consumption, and sale of cereal, malt beverage, or alcoholic liquors in a public park. And fourth is waiver of signed code ordinance to place no more than four banners on private properties on Mary Street and Kansas Avenue with approval of landowners in the intersection of Third and Kansas Avenue. Ceylan?
Governing body, this Tumbleweed Festival, as stated, May 21st, 2024, they came before the governing body, and you approved the request that Matt just stated. They decide they received sponsorship opportunity for Friday night. They're originally only going to do Saturday and Sunday, but they have since received sponsorship for Friday night, so they wanted to come before you and ask to have the use of the West Green and the fees waived, and then also to allow for the possession, consumption, and sale of cereal, malt beverage, or alcoholic liquor on that Friday as well. Previously, it was just Saturday and Sunday.
So is Matt here?
Matt is here.
Okay. Yeah, I just have a question. So I know that, you know, in the, in the past, the Tumbleweed lots of times was, I mean, it's still a great event, and it's still really family-friendly. I'm just curious about, is the allowing of the malt cereal beverages and the alcohol, is that adding like value to it, or is it adding income to you or helping you guys break even? Or I'm just curious about the value, because in the past, I mean, when it wasn't there, it seemed like it was really packed too, and I'm just curious about the value of that, if it's continuing to, to increase that or add value to your event?
Yeah, so I can speak to, it definitely adds to our, our budget line. It increases our budget line, so that helps us with putting the festival together. And then it also, we usually partner with a community partner to actually run the, run the tent, so it's an opportunity to do that as well.
So you do get money back for that?
Yes, yeah, so we operate that internally. We select a community partner to volunteer to run the, run it, so that becomes a line item in our budget.
And where is it located? I mean, I can't remember for a second. I don't.
Yeah, so it's in the, it's kind of in the gazebo area, not the, not the gazebo where that was built for Tumbleweed, but it's like the picnic gazebo over there towards the south end. So we've got the, the two stages there next to the fence, and it just kind of circles in right there.
Yeah, as long, I mean, I was thinking away from, you know, the, the children's performance area, that would be important.
Yeah, absolutely.
Important to me, so.
The children's performance area is the other side of the, our festival grounds.
No, I appreciate, well, it's an incredible, and it has grown and grown every year, so I, I think you're on the right track. Yep, it's good.
Any other questions for?
No, thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the request as presented to add Friday, August 23rd, 2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We don't see Ceylan for a while, and then she's up there though.
On a report of the city manager, the first two items, we'd like to congratulate a couple of employees on recent, recent appointments. The first, Police Chief Courtney Pruitt was appointed to the Kansas 911 Coordinating Council, representing the Kansas Association of Police Chiefs, so we're proud of Chief Pruitt, and he'll, I believe, finish out an unexpired term and then be up for further consideration after June 25th, or June 2025. Also, congratulations to City Clerk Ceylan Hurtado on being appointed to the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Foundation Board of Directors. Ceylan just concluded a, her tenure on the IIMC's National Board, and this is the foundation that supports IIMC's membership, and so we're proud of her, and she'll be serving a three-year term. Items 7C through 7E are monthly staff reports. Does the commission have any questions on those or comments?
I had one question, just kind of on the graph, and I noticed that it only went through March.
Which graph?
The, I think it's the employments one. I think there's two of them, the employments and the gas, I believe, but just curious on how, how fast those update or when we would see that update happen.
Sure. I don't know if, is Rochelle here today? Okay, yeah, come on up, Rochelle.
Good afternoon. Yes, these are a little delayed, and we'll be sending the newest ones here shortly. Typically, we get those after two weeks of the first of the month. We get those from the airline after they have a chance to audit those, so we have been a little delayed. A little busy at the airports, but we're trying to catch up with our duties, and so the PFC typically will always be delayed at least two months, maybe three months, because that is the fee that the airline processes.
Okay.
And then send back to us, but yeah, you were correct. The employments and operations and everything is a little outdated, so we'll get those updated for you.
Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we'll draw your attention to the meetings of note. If anything requires an RSVP, we'd ask you to do that through the city clerk's office. I think we're ready for 9A, the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, that would be ordinance number 2566-2024A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2566-2024A.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding vacating a public street, the 2900 block of Schulman Avenue, situated within the corporate limits of the city. If approved, it would be Resolution 3113-2024. And, Mike?
Mayor and Commissioners, the city of Garden City, when you are requesting that the governing body approve a proposal to vacate that 2900 East Schulman Avenue, the infrastructure within the development was never constructed and is not desired by the current landowner or surrounding property owners. The public street has no city utilities or lines in it, no Cox Communications, AT&amp;T, or Black Hills Energy. A notice to propose to vacate will be sent out by certified mail to Cox, Black Hills Energy, Black Hills Energy, and AT&amp;T. Should you approve this vacation, set this public hearing date, we suggest that you suggest the, we suggest you set the date and time proposed for August 6, 2024 at 1:15 p.m. And the little map there up on the screen is the area that's being requested to vacate that used to go right straight through before all of that was built, and that fun center was there long before Schulman crossed. And it will allow that owner, that property, to build their building a little bit farther back to the west or wherever they're going to do it in there.
So, Mike, there's no impact to the city at all for vacating, and is there any impact to the landowner, other than he can use, the full use of his property? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That would be no, there's no impact to the city.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve Resolution 3113-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be Resolution Number 3114-2024, in abate conditions at 209 South First Street. We have some other nuisance resolutions, or one other nuisance resolution on the agenda. Trent will go through the full rundown of the processes used and the notifications used, and the first one and the second one will simply limit it to the address and the violation, and if there's anybody here on either of those items, they're welcome to come up and speak to the issue. Trent?
Good afternoon, the air commissioners. So for your consideration today, we have a nuisance at 209 South First Street. That's one motor vehicle up on the property. We did have some communication with the property owners or owners of the vehicle. They did ask for a two-week extension, which was granted. Our violation letters were sent out on May 10th and June 7th. As the violation still sits there and exists today, we are asking for that to be abated. The alternative we're offering today, number one, the governing body may approve the tax resolution, which will allow us to abate it. Number two, the governing body may not approve the tax resolution, and staff's recommendation is to approve the tax resolution. This will note, is any charges associated with the removal or termination of that vehicle will be assessed to the property.
Trent, just for a point of clarification, the request from the property owner for a two-week extension, was that off of the June 7th date or the May 10th date?
The May 10th.
Okay.
Mayor, move we approve Resolution Number 3114-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Can you repeat that number again, please?
3114-2024.
Thank you.
3114, yeah. Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be Resolution 3115-2024. If approved, it would be resolution 3115-2024, in abate conditions at 1705 Ninth Street.
Mayor, move me to approve resolution number 3115-2024.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Great Plains Development, Inc. for the city membership and participation in the amount of $4,350. Here today to present is staff from Great Plains Development, Inc., and I'll turn it over to them. Hello, Bob.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Commissioners, mayor, staff, it's great to be here again, year after year, and providing with all the different services that we do. For those of you that may not be familiar with Great Plains, I'm Bob Wetmore, Executive Co-Director of Great Plains. We have Faye Trent also as co-director. Faye and I kind of wear two different hats at Great Plains. We wear a grant hat, and the grant section or portion of the work that we do for you kind of involves more in the county, particularly if we have something out in the county that might need a grant. The Community Development Block Grant Program for the state of Kansas is actually granted through certified administrators like us, so we've helped with those over the years. The thing about the, the city itself, obviously you're not low to moderate income, and 99.9% of the time, it doesn't qualify. There are occasions when there may be a project, for instance, over in Dodge, we did Compass Behavioral Health, we can focus in on specific projects and specific beneficiaries, so we might be able to get some of those Community Development Block Grants. Right now, there's only four programs that the state has narrowed down to, most of which wouldn't apply to us here inside the city limits. The other hat that we wear is, is the loan hat. We assist with all the small business development loans out there, so we work closely with Economic Development, LON and Grant, we work hand in glove. If you look on your list here, I'm going to skip over the summary sheet a moment and have you go to the third page, and you'll notice, here's all the things we've done in the last year, year and a half. We have more loans than you can check the stick out. The great part of this process is Grant, LON are fantastic partners. Economic Development will bring the lead to us, so we'll bring the lead to Economic Development. They help with the Kansas Small Business Development Center planning, the actual business plans, if they need one. If it's an existing business, we just dive right into qualifying them for the different loans. Banks come first, so what we do is we always, we always, always, always say, are you working with a bank, before we even start. If they're not, we help them work with the different banks. The other neat thing about, about us working here is we work with all the banks, and we're very close to all the commercial officers here in all the banks, so often we get the lead directly from the bank, and then we point it over to Economic Development, and then we co-work the actual loan together. Over the years, we've also been the folks that, and I'm going to have you look at that giant 11 by 17 sheet, here's all the ones we grant programs that we do have available. One of those things on that list is the CBG revolving loan fund, which we have both at the city and the county level here. So for decades, we've been under contract with you to manage that loan fund. That loan fund is ancient money from 1987, and over the years, it's been invested and reinvested in local businesses over and over again. As the years have drawn on, it's been used less and less, because again, it has grant requirements attached to it, because it was originally a grant brought down from HUD through Commerce, Kansas Commerce, down to the city. So we've been revolving that fund all these years, but the requirements are low to moderate income, the requirements are also, if you do construction, Davis Bacon wage rates, you have to have public bidding, it involves environmentals. So you see over the years, there's been less and less of those loans made, and more and more of all the other different types of loans out there, the GAAP funds that we have available, because we probably have in the city here, we probably have at least a dozen different alternatives, including the Garden City Area Industrial Development Committee, which we also administrate their funds for them. So there's lots of options. As of Friday of last week, the mayor, I think, received a letter from Kansas Commerce that says the state, for the first time in history, is going to be recalling those funds back to Topeka. Have we used them a lot over the last few years? Not really, because of the requirements. Is it, is it a huge blow to have those funds remanded back to the state? And by the way, this is statewide, so probably the eight counties that we have and the four cities will all be going back. No, it's, it really doesn't change what we do, and we always look at that fund to see if we can use it first, and usually low to moderate income, they don't qualify right away, or if it involves construction, we avoid it. So is it, is it a huge change? Not really. Is it funds that we have out here in western Kansas that are going to go back to Topeka? Yes, and so from that perspective, it is sad. But I wanted to let you know about that today, it just occurred on Friday of, of last week. Of all the activity and the things that we do, which includes technical assistance, assistance with business planning, assistance with all these different loan sources, it really doesn't affect that in a great degree. There was a little fee that we received out of the loans that we actually billed, we would get 3% of that back out of the fund to help us with that. But that will go away. There are three current loans, or loans that are not current, that haven't been paid back, they're with the attorney, so if they get paid back, it will be remanded back to Commerce.
Bob, is Commerce interested in taking over the collection of those three accounts? If they're interested in-
I knew you would ask that.
-drawing back the money. There's certainly been a lot of time and effort, staff time, legal time, put into-
Earlier questions were, you get to keep all the loans that aren't paid, and we get to keep collections. So Faye and I have talked about it, and we're more than happy, because we do so much other work for you, and you provide us with voluntary membership dues, we'll just go ahead and continue to help with that. If the funds come back, we'll make sure they get back, and that will get you to a final closeout, because what the state will do, since it's a grant, a revolving grant, there'll be a closeout at the end. So the answer is no, they would like you to do the collections, or plus.
So Bob, did they had no discussion about modernizing that, the CBG, whatever that is, the CDBG fund?
It's hard to say.
Yeah, it is. So they had no talk about modernizing it, instead they just decided to close it out and then pull back funds?
I've been doing this for 14 years, so about 10 years ago, we went to HUD in Washington as a statewide group, and we said, is there a way to defederalize that? The answer was yes. Kansas had to adopt, Commerce would have had to adopt a process to do that, it would have been seven years, we would have had to revolve the funds out all over again. We've done it over and over again, but then we'd have to revolve them out all over, anything that came back would be defederalized. But Kansas did not take that path. So the current folks in Commerce have decided they're just going to take the funds back. My question was, is it going to go back into a pot?
Right.
Because right now, we do have access to earlier funds that were brought back, they don't know the answer to that either. So would we have the opportunity to go get a loan out of that pot in Commerce? We don't know that answer yet either. The letter's not overly specific.
So, Bob, just to clarify on those three outstanding loans, you're saying you will take back over the collection? I mean, I know you did the initial, but, but Paul's contacted us and said, I can't get any action, you guys do it, and we've been doing it for four years, three years or four years on those?
Uh, almost three.
Well, yeah, they were, it was COVID money, yeah, so about three years on those, and Great Plains has not been doing it.
Good, good question. Your other opportunity is to say it's not collectible, because you're not respons, the funds themselves are custodians of them, but they don't actually belong to the city. So as custodians, HUD brings them down to Commerce, Commerce, your contract with them is your custodian. Have we had loans not pay off, or have we foreclosed, or, or simply written them off? Yeah, so it is possible, and it's happened in other locations. It is possible to say that the loan wouldn't be collectible. Just to update those that may not know, during COVID, we may not have been able to make many loans over the years, but during COVID, they took the brakes off, and you could apply for COVID funds for that short period of time. And that's where we acquire the current loans, and the fact that we have three that simply are not paid.
Bob, can you also talk just a little bit? I, I mean, I appreciate you work with Economic Development, I mean, I, because I, we, we, I'm glad that we invest in our, if any, kind of economic development. So I'm curious about how that looks, that partnership looks, and then is there anything that we can do to enhance that? I mean, I know the, I know that you work closely, but what does that, what does that look like?
They have my cell phone and they text me all the time. It's, it's very easy, that relationship is, it's actually, this is Suzy Folds from Great Plains Development, she's our loan officer daily practically, sometimes when we're working on a loan, as far as contact and the fact that when they're working on a business plan, it's, it's regular. So it's about as close as we can get. We, we show up on the phone or by Zoom all the time, so it's really close. I used to be in a former life Economic Development chamber for Dodge, so I'm close to everybody over here. We work closely even with, with Micah, some of the, some of the stuff comes straight from the chamber to us too, so. We, we haven't had any issues with that. In fact, sometimes it's too popular, because we get a whole bunch all at the same time, but that's good, that's a good thing. So I, I'm open to any suggestions for that. Anything we could do, we'll do. So, back to the remanding of the funds. I don't have any answer to that, other than we're here to support you, and we've always been here to support you, we'll just keep going with the process, if that makes sense. Matt, I think we need more explanation, and we've asked for, for clarification, so, from Commerce.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that? I know that over the years, you folks have been very close to us. Currently, you have an appointed member for Great Plains, and that's Dan Fankhouser. Dan is also the president of our boards, and we hope he would keep that going for a little bit longer, if that would work, because he's, he's hand in glove with everything we do. On the county side, Dwayne Derice has also been on our board for quite a while, so we're very close to everybody here in Garden. If you would consider another year of volunteer membership, we would appreciate that, because it is voluntary dues, it is, it is not, some areas of the state, there are actually no levies, so it's voluntary dues. It keeps us going to Topeka regularly, meeting with all the certified development companies that do loans, meeting with all their county development districts, keeping our, our contacts going, not only with Topeka, but out through the region here too. Questions, thoughts? We really appreciate your partnership, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Commissioners, if the, the alternative is before you, you may approve the request for membership in the amount of $4,350. You may deny the membership agreement and pay the minimum 870 membership fee, or you may not approve the membership agreement. Staff recommends continuing the practice, which would be the membership agreement in the amount of $4,350.
So, when I'm looking over this membership list, so I see that the City of Garden City has, has one representative, but Finy County has two, but we're paying the same amount. And I'm curious about, I mean, I know that, you know, Air Bay is part of Finy County also, but I'm curious about, as a city, you know, I don't mind paying the amount, but I'm curious about why we have one seat, and then, but we're paying the same amount as Finy County.
Good, that's a really good question. The way this is set up, it's, it's very esoteric, and it's been around for a very long time. These agencies were set up by the state of Kansas at the request of actually several government agencies back in the seventies and eighties, and they became mergers of different organizations. So you had, down here, you had regional planning commissions that converged together, you had a loan company, like, which we call a certified development company, you had one in Pratt, you had an Economic Development District here, and all these came together, and then the state of Kansas passed legislation in the late eighties that created this kind of, well, the maps, the map is attached to your packet there at the back, it created these regions across the state. So we're a 28 county region, we're a charitable, not-for-profit organization that's been around since dinosaurs, first probably walked the earth with, with Topeka, and our job has always been, from our actual bylaws and mandates, to help, help you interface with all of these programs out there and figure out what they are. As I tell the story, it took me five years to learn it, and five years to practice it, and in the last five years, I think I understand all of this. So our job is to interface with Commerce for you, to help put all these programs in front of everyone. So what we'll do is not only work the field with Economic Development, we'll actually sit with them and say, here's, here's a whole bunch of new things that we have available, I attached some of the new ones, I didn't go over them, but there's new funds available, some of which are integral, like the E Community Fund, which you may have heard from, from LON and Grant, we help with those, because that's all part of, of the different loan funds out there. So, good question, and it's the volunteer support that makes it possible, because there really is nothing out there to actually pay for our services, we just exist. So what we'll do is we'll make a little money off of the packaging and servicing of the loans, keeping those going, and then we also make money off of the Economic Development District activity, meaning we help with the grants out there too. So it is, it's a real hodgepodge of how, and it was my years of working on the other side of all of this, realizing how important this was, that Great Plains didn't have the staff or the ability to cover a lot of this, so. So we serve the 28 counties of Kansas. You guys are probably one of the largest that we've got, I mean, there's, there's no secret, Great Plains, even not so much Dodge, more so places like Garden City and Pratt and liberal. So. Any other question? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do I hear anyone from the, from the commission?
So is this the same amount we paid last year? I was looking for that, and I was going to ask the question, and I forgot. Do you know how much we paid last year?
I don't know, it's got to be very similar.
It's the same amount.
It is, okay. Yeah, I move that we approve the Great Plains Development Incorporated membership agreement in the amount of $4,350.
I second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
If we can just take a quick second, I'll give these back to Mr. Wetmore. Thank you. All right, 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of downtown development funds for 207 North Main Street. And I'm going to turn this over to John.
Good afternoon. John Chapl has applied for the downtown development fund for the interior remodel located at 207 North Main. The proposed remodel will allow for a new food hall and a renovated second floor for additional seating and entertainment. The building permit was issued after completing the building review process on June 26, 2024. Staff determined the eligible work includes demolition, professional fees, and general remodeling in order to accommodate this project. Total costs for the eligible work are estimated to be $125,615. Based on the projects- Based on the project's code and design plan submitted, staff included a score of 12 points. Project was awarded one point for addressing a fire issue within the building, eight points for allowing improvements to an existing restaurant or bar, and two points for 25% or less of the project being used for facade improvements, and another point awarded for potentially drawing in customers from the surrounding area. A score of 12 points calculates a potential reimbursement of 24% of the eligible project cost, or $30,147.60. All application materials, including the reimbursement score sheet, are attached. This is the fourth of downtown development fund application of 2024. The remaining balance of the downtown development fund is $125,871. Based on the potential reimbursements score determined by staff, approving the downtown development application will leave a remaining balance of $95,723.40. Under proposed use conforms with the Garden City Comprehensive Plan and Downtown Plan and the zoning regulations. There are three alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may fund the award for $30,147.60. And two, the governing body may fund the award at a different amount. And three, the governing body may not fund the award, may not fund the award of the downtown development fund application. And staff recommends the governing body award the $30,147.60. There is a fiscal note. The downtown development fund has a current balance of $125,871. Based on the potential reimbursement score determined by staff, approving a downtown development fund application will, will leave a remaining balance of $95,723.40. And we do have an applicant here as well.
I've heard lots of good comments about, and then just bringing also new businesses and potential businesses, so. Yeah, I move that we award the fund at $30,147.60.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
And I did notice that Janet was advertising for them, so.
Item 12C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution of downtown development funds for 312 North Eighth Street. Dante?
Good afternoon. The applicant's applied to the downtown development fund for the interior remodel located at 312 North Eighth Street. The unit is currently vacant, but will be remodeled to create new office space. A building permit was issued after completing the building review process on June 26, 2024. Staff determined the eligible work includes demolition, professional fees, and general remodeling in order to accommodate this project. The total costs for the eligible work are estimated to be $175,280. Based on the project's code and design plan submitted, staff included a score of eight points. The project was awarded five points for being vacant for more than one year, two points for allowing 25% of project costs to be used for facade improvements, and another one point for potentially drawing in customers from the surrounding area. A score of eight points calculates a potential reimbursement of 60% of the eligible project cost, or $28,044.80. All application materials, including the reimbursement score sheet, are attached. This is the fifth downtown development fund application of 2024. The remaining balance for the downtown development fund after the last approval is $95,723.40. Based on the potential reimbursement score determined by staff, approving the downtown development fund application will leave a remaining balance of $67,678.60. The proposed use conforms with the Garden City Comprehensive Plan, Downtown Plan, and the zoning regulations. There are three alternatives in front of you. The governing body may award the fund at $28,044.80, excuse me, 80 cents. The governing body may award at a different amount. Or three, the governing body may not fund the award for the downtown development fund application. And staff recommends the governing body award $28,044.80. And in the last, the fiscal note, the downtown development fund has a remaining balance of $95,723.40. Based on the potential reimbursement score determined by staff, approving this application will leave a remaining balance of $67,678.60. There is a representative for the applicant here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion on that? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we fund the award at $28,044.80.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 12D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the purchase of real property from James L. Keller LLC for $110,000. Fred?
This is Mike.
Mike.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. Since 2022, the water utility has been working to replace the public water supply well located on Chestnut Street near the intersection of Fleming Street. Kansas Water Appropriation Act and subsequent regulations administered by the Division of Water Resources limit the well's geographical relocation from its existing point of diversion. Staff identified a parcel in the 300 block of Fleming Street, which is Lot 1, Block 1 of the Keller Edition Number 1, as a potentially suitable site for the construction of a new well that would meet the requirements of water rights regulators and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Governing body approved a memo of understanding with James L. Keller LLC at its February 21, 2023 meeting. In that memo, the governing body allowed us to negotiate the purchase of the property for the purpose of constructing a public water supply well and to be connected to the city's water system. The initial proposal was to purchase approximately one-third of the lot. However, as the design of the project proceeded in concert with the property negotiation, it became clear that additional property would be needed in order to satisfy the regulatory requirements of KDHE regarding the provision of adequate space to protect the water supply from contaminants. Professional engineering consultants, PEC, is finalizing the project design for the new well, and DWR has issued the change in point of diversion for the water right. The agreement presented to the governing body today is for the purchase of the lot located in the 300 block of Fleming Street, as described above, for $110,000. The full details of this agreement, along with the covenants and right of first refusal, are attached to this agenda item. In addition, I need to add that the final, final, I'm sorry, the final legal description, we're waiting for the servicer to finish that up. So if the governing body chooses to approve this, we ask that you would allow the city attorney to put in the legal description once she receives that, hopefully next week. So alternatives, the governing body may choose to approve the purchase agreement covenant and right of first refusal as presented from James L. Keller LLC for $110,000. The governing body may choose not to approve the purchase agreement and covenants from James L. Keller LLC as presented. The recommendation is that the staff recommends approving the purchase agreement covenant and right of first refusal and authorize the mayor to sign the documents to purchase the property from James, James L. Keller LLC for $110,000. Under the fiscal note, if this was approved, this unbudgeted land acquisition would be added to the 2024 revised budget. The purchase will impact the water wastewater fund anticipated 2025 cash balance of $3,490,129 by the amount of the purchase associated with the closing costs as outlined in this agreement. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve the agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
I do have a question. So it, with this property, after we purchase it, so will it stay, remain vacant, or will it, or is there a possibility for any type of development to go on it? Or does it have to remain vacant because of the use for the water?
We'll, we'll end up using over half of that piece of property for the well and wellhouse. The remaining frontage that would go against Fleming Street will remain vacant. If the city, if the governing body chooses to do something with that property later on, it will come back to Keller's. They have the right to buy that property back.
If something could be done?
Based on that, they will, they will.
Right. Okay. No, I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, Mike. Item 12E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a draft of the 2025 city budget for the purpose of the indication of revenue neutral rate intent and authorize the mayor to sign that indication of intent. I'm going to invite Jared to start the, please, please do. And so I think mayor, or I think Jared's going to start this discussion and then we'll turn it over to Mayor Ortiz to facilitate kind of going through the elements of the staff memo that have been prepared.
Good afternoon. At the June 4th City Commission meeting, the staff completed the presentation of the 2025 city manager's proposed budget. From this point, the city commission begins its deliberation of the budget. The city received the estimated valuation from the county clerk and the assessed valuation used for the budget preparation for the city is $294,764,265. This is an increase of approximately 5.66% over 2023. The revenue neutral rate identified by the county is 36.033 mils. Accounting for the valuation from the county, the budget, as it has been presented to the commission, would require a mil levy of 40.831 or an increase of 2.339 mils. To achieve a flat mil levy rate of 38.492, the budget would need to be adjusted by an additional $689,445. A one-mil reduction would require an adjustment of $984,209. And to achieve the revenue neutral rate of 36.033, the budget would need to be adjusted by $1,385,181. Appropriate next steps would be to identify projects, programs, or line items about which you, as individual commissioners, have requested of staff or for which you have recommended amendments for the commission's consideration. As the commission considers individually and collectively the type of budget it wants for 2025, staff encourages you to articulate what you are weighing. For instance, are specific programs or line item expenses, whether cuts or adds, of significant importance to you? Is a certain property tax dollar amount or mil levy increase, decrease, or no change of, of significant importance to you? Of all the things you deem as significant importance, which is most important? The tough question for the commission is identifying ways to get there. This direction from the commission enables staff to prepare the final budget so that it may accomplish the goals and focus of the commission. In that regard, staff has identified some of the major discussion points on expenses, revenues, and unbudgeted considerations for the commission to consider in its evaluation. I'm going to skip past those items as the mayor plans to go through them individually. Go to the last paragraph. At this time, the decision before you today must be made regarding the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The deadline to submit an indication to the county regarding the revenue neutral rate is July 20, 2024. The city's requirement is to indicate whether or not the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The city is also asked to include anticipated mil levy rate, which will be included in the publication sent to residents by the county. The final mil levy adopted by the city and published for the budget hearing can differ from the mil levy rate included in the publication. However, the city aims to estimate the anticipated mil levy accurately. And so today, the alternatives before you after discussion would be to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify a mil levy rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens, to postpone the action regarding the revenue neutral rate to the meeting on July 16, 2024, and make a decision at that meeting to comply with the July 20, 2024 deadline, or to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating the city does not intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate and indicate the revenue neutral rate or some other rate lower than the revenue neutral rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. And staff recommends alternative one. There's a lot of detail in the items, I believe, the mayor plans to go through. We'll keep notes and kind of document the conversation as we go. And I'll just remind you, the, the indication on the notice, you can come down from that mil levy, but you should not exceed that mil levy once we've published that notification to citizens. So when you, when you put that out there, that's the threshold that you would then entail for your published budget, which we will go forth and publish in August. And I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through.
Okay, thank you, Jared. As we just go through this, I know we've kind of asked staff and, and personnel and Matt and Jared to kind of give us a breakdown as much as possible for the, for the budget at hand. So we, I've kind of asked to put out an email so that you guys can read through beforehand. And they have color-coded kind of some items on here that we can go through at one time or another. And if we got questions between these items, that we can jump through and ask, ask questions for Mike and Jared, or Matt and Jared. And so I'll kind of identify, or I'll kind of explain the, the colors. I'll read that. It's in the expenses. So the following assumptions are incorporated into the budget as presented and would be available to, to be adjusted at the commission's discretion. As in past years, we will use the colors green, yellow, and red, as staffs indicated of the level of risk associated with adopting, adapting each of the following budget assumptions. Green indicates the staff recommended option, yellow indicates caution, and red is ill-advised, given the level of security, of scrutiny that the staff has put into adjusting the budget at this point, including reducing general fund expenditures by approximately $2 million. There are limited options listed below that are identified as green for this year. So we'll start with one, and I think I'll just go around the horn as far as, that way we can get a clear and concise assumption on what direction we want to go. The main question at hand here, just so that we kind of all, I'd like to just kind of reiterate that there's, on the table right now, there's an increase of 2.339% mil, or where there's a flat mil levy rate of the 38.492 points, or a reduction of one mil. That would require some numbers adjusted, so. Is that, is that clear, Mud?
So mayor, you're wanting, you're, you're kind of wanting our direction first and foremost, if you want us to stay flat or increase or lower?
Yeah.
That's your first question?
Well, I keep, yeah, I keep that in mind.
And then we'll go from there.
That's what we want, want to give direction to Jared, who put this back into a clear memo to us the next meeting.
Okay.
So we'll start with question one. I'll kind of go my left and go around back to Commissioner Landgraf, so Commissioner Winn, if you wanted to start. So, and if we can make assumptions as far as like, stuff we want to keep or, or reduce or leave alone, or just take out totally, we'll be taking notes on, on that assumption of yours as well. So on number one, I don't think, I guess, does that make sense, or no? Do I need to clarify?
I guess let's go back and clarify.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't make myself clear, mayor. I guess the first question is, is, as a commission, as a body, do we want to keep the mil levy? Do we want to increase it to meet the needs, keep it flat, or decrease it? I guess that would be the first question, and then we can work our way back from there.
And I think my question, I'm not, because when I read through this, I'm not understanding neither, is so is, if we keep all the red, does that keep our mil levy flat, or is that saying we still would need the two-point?
No, the red just indicates whether that's something staff recommends being adjusted or not, but there's no breakdown of if you do this, 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 and this, that gets you your flat, or this, 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 and this gets you negative a mil.
So with understanding where we want to set as far as the mil levy rate, that would help you come back and say, hey, these are the things that we're going to have to do. So that, I think that is the most important question.
And once you set that target, our, my plan, I've got a breakdown to kind of track as you go through each item, if the consensus is to touch and adapt that number, to not touch and adapt that number, and then to come back and kind of have that deeper discussion just on the items that you all feel are worth adjusting or catch your eye to adjust, and we can identify what the value is for those and how close that would get you to your target.
Well, mayor, I would like to keep the mil levy flat. I mean, I just, this is, I know this is a tight budget year, and I know, but there's also other arising costs. And I mean, I think the thing that I want to make sure that we're careful of is not adding any undue burden, but also making sure that we keep our services at a level that, yeah, I mean, keep our city looking the way it does and keep attracting, because I think if you decrease or if you cut your budget so badly or so, so deeply that you no longer are able to attract businesses, then again, I think everything kind of grinds to a halt. So I mean, I'm, my goal would be hopefully to keep the, the mil levy flat. And if not, I under, I just understand if there, we can justify why would it increase, but I might much rather keep it flat.
Okay. I would also like to keep the mil levy flat.
I would, I guess I'll give my, my point of view here. I mean, I know last year was kind of a, an unexpected year as well with costs rising. I will, at that time, I didn't mind going up a percent or a mil or half a mil. I mean, it just sets us up for the future and looking ahead on, on growth for the city. And I know like, I mean, when I was running, I, I wanted to reduce taxes. I mean, that's the thing that we all tried to do, but the city is just one part of taxes that's involved. I mean, you have the county, the state, the school district, and all those things. I just think that, I don't know if anybody else is working as hard as we are and our staff's working as hard to just dwindle down the budget and try to cut things. I mean, I don't know if we're the only ones doing that. That's just my, my thought, but we have to look at growth in the city. We have to look at what's coming in the future. We have to look at what's coming in the future. And this just doesn't set us up for '25. If we make a decision to lower our mill levies this year, it could affect our '26 budget. That's just where I'm looking at as far as what we're going to need for growth in the community, equipment that's going to be handling for street repairs, just all around. So I mean, that, from my point of view, I could see as maybe safeguarding our future versus safeguarding a decision now. So that's kind of my point of view and direction I'm going to go with, with. So I don't mind an increase. I would like to keep it flat though, too, but a little small little increment increase would be fine with me.
Commissioner Landgraf.
So I would like to at least see it stay flat, if not a very slight decrease. And by very slight, I mean thinking fractional of a mil decrease.
Okay. Commissioner Cessna.
Okay. First off, I'd really like to thank staff for all of their hard work in setting the budget, especially the hard decisions that they had to make to get approximately $2 million out of the budget to meet kind of where we're at right now. So thank you to all of our staff and our departments for going through that. I would like to see it continue to be at a flat mil rate of 38.492 mils. I think we can get there through discussion today. I understand our community is continuing to grow and be the regional hub of Western Kansas, but again, I also realize that we have to be fiduciarily responsible for the taxes that we receive and also for being responsible for our taxpayers and what they pay in taxes in this community. That's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. So with that, all of these line items, there's 20, 20 items that are listed that we can go through and pick and choose from, and we could either say we want to keep that totally or we want to nitpick that, that item and go through that so that Jared and Matt know kind of the direction on what to do with that item.
And mayor, if it's all right, when we get to one that's a, some of these are all-in or all-out, right? It's either in or it's out. But some of these are kind of throttle ones, too, that they can be minimally increased or decreased depending on if they're revenue or expense. And there's also, while we use the, I think the commission kind of liked last year, the red, yellow, green, but Jared's invented a couple more colors. There's relo, relo and yellow. It's kind of halfway between red and yellow and halfway between green and yellow. So if there's, you know, you know, some of these, we've tried to adjust to say, you know, a wholesale, for, these are throttle issues, wholesale reductions or wholesale leave this alone sort of, we didn't feel real comfortable with that and didn't real, you know, real comfortable giving it a yellow indication either. So there's kind of some of those halfway. I think when you get to those, you could interpret that as us saying, these might be ripe for throttling slightly depending on where the commission needs to get to and to the extent that you want this, you know, one element to play a role in, in trying to get to that level. So it does sound like there's consensus around an approximate target, which is super helpful. And now I think, yeah, as, as mayor lead you through the rest of the discussion, if we get to one of those that's a throttle issue, we may be able to give you some more help on, okay, what's a half a percent here mean, or what's a, you know, a reduction of $100,000 to a $700,000 program, what's that look like?
So as, as in an effort for item one and a cost savings, what, removing or reducing the salary pool, what would that look like as far as each commissioner's thought on keeping that or adjusting that?
I guess, could I, can I make a suggestion, mayor? Just to kind of, I think if it's, if it's consensus, I'm kind of stepping out here, but if it's consensus of the commission, because it is being recommended and that it is ill-advised by staff that we look at the red options, if we could just take those off the board unless a commissioner has a concern about that, I would move on to looking at the yellow and the greens. That would kind of speed up the process, and then we could debate those yellow and greens a little bit more on where we can move the line and maybe move the throttle on those, if that's okay with the commission?
That's a good question.
Well, my only, only caveat to that is, is if it's something that you say, hey, this is the only way we can make that, keep that flat, then that might, you might have to interject and say, hey, there's no way to really with the things that you've already discussed, yellow or green. But I agree with you. I think especially when it comes to like Sowers or some of these things, the ill-advised, I, I can't imagine us reading through this list that we would, we would do anything to really, you know, change on their city budget if we had to, so.
I can, as I keep track, I'll try to do quick math. If you go through the yellow and green, I can give you a pretty close indication of where you're at.
Okay.
I guess if that's okay with the entire, if that's a consensus by the entire commission.
Commissioner Nguyen, are you okay?
I'm fine with it as long as after we've gone to yellow and green, if we're still nowhere close, then going back to red, but yeah.
Okay. So yeah, I'll go ahead and, and kind of, we'll speed through that a little bit, but not reading everything, but I think as far as getting clarity for, for the ones taking notes is, is good. So all of the red, if we skip down to one, two, and three, those are red. So four is the downtown vision 2025 request of 138,300 increase. It's $4,300 over the '24 funding. So would, we want to go ahead and discuss that item for reduction or a removal or a keep.
I think the increase of 4,300, it doesn't really allow us to hit that mark, the big number we're looking at, so I think you might better to backtrack to this, just because the numbers are not very big.
So if it's not a very big number, then it's, it's minute to kind of discuss. So for you, how about you, Commissioner?
Well, I think, but that's, I mean, it's going to, I mean, this is the, I mean, I don't know, this course has been going around with all kinds of the devils in the detect details, where we're going to have to make some decisions. I mean, I think this is maybe a year where those who are asking for increase, this might not be this year to ask for an increase. And so this is one of those, I mean, I would be, I would be, I would like to keep the level, the 2024 level, funding level, but, but this might not be a year to ask for additional increases just because there's so many other things on the table that we as a city need. So I understand that, you know, there's not a lot of dollars here, but it seems like there's going to be, those kind of things are what's going to make the difference. So I, I would just want to keep it at current funding level. I don't want to see any increases, so.
Okay. Commissioner Cessna.
I feel the same way. I think, you know, we're trying to fill a $689,445 hole, so every little bit will help fill that, that hole. I think if we keep all requests at 2024 funding, that'll help us meet that. So reduce, reduce it back down to the 2024 with a savings of $4,300.
Commissioner Landgraf, are you?
I'm good with the 2024 level. I am open to increasing by that 4,300, given it's about like a 3.2% increase, I think roughly, but I'm good with leaving at 2024 level as well.
And I am also okay with keeping the 2024 level. Okay. Item number five, this would be the Finney County Economic Development request of 305,000. That was the level with 2024 funding, so Commissioner Nguyen, have any suggestions?
No, I, staff does not think it's wise of us to go below the 2024 level, so I'm inclined to stay there.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen.
I think this is the engine that drives, you know, our success, and I would, there's, yeah, I wouldn't be advised to cut it.
Okay. Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, I think they kept the request as normal for 2024. I don't think cutting that at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Landgraf.
I'm good with keeping it as the current level.
Okay, and I am as well, so we'll go with that on item five. Item six would be the municipal bonds, 2024 request.
Municipal ban.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. The municipal bans of 2024 request of 23,000, this is level with the 2023 funding, so their anticipated request would be that same amount for '25 as well.
So I first want to say I absolutely love the Garden City Municipal Ban and played in it for many years. I think it's a community treasure. I do know though, however, for during COVID, there was a couple of years where we still funded and then they really didn't need those dollars, and I can't remember looking at their budget, and I didn't bring my budget book with me. But I, I mean, to me, it seems that, you know, this is a place where, I mean, they would have funding for this year, and then I think it's, I don't think they're in a big, big, a big savings account. This is not a place, I think they need to either use all the funds that we give them or, you know, really ask for what they need. And so if there's a place, I mean, this might be the year since they could use some of their reserves and, but like I said, I don't, if that makes it go away, then I would not want to cut it. But I mean, this is again, one of those areas where I think they do have some, some good funding and they weren't using during the two COVID years, because they just, we didn't have a lot of, a lot of performances. And I know that the performances have been less than they usually are. So again, maybe this is a place where we could save some money.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah, I really enjoy the municipal ban. I think if the services they provide, services, are a little bit different compared to previous years, then would it make sense to go down a couple thousand dollars for them to see if they can still try the same amount of concerts with the number being 20,000 or so?
Okay. Commissioner Cessna.
Yeah, I don't, their request is at the same level it's been. I don't see cutting that. It's a, it's one of those quality of life things for our community that I see that is being provided in our community.
Okay. Commissioner Landgraf.
I would be open to keeping it the same, but if there are large savings in the municipal ban's account, then I'd be open to cutting it.
And I would be okay with keeping it where it's at, so that would be my decision. Jared, does that help you out?
Yeah.
On task?
And I can inquire of them about their cash balance and see if that's something they would be able to floor for a little bit and, and bring that back to the next meeting as well.
Because they used to give you, well, I don't know if I can remember, but they used to give you a whole budget balance sheet, and it seemed that they had a pretty hefty balance to where this might be a year where they could.
Yep, I'll touch base with their treasurer.
Okay.
Okay, so item six is red. I did have one question on that one, though, so.
You mean seven?
Did I say seven?
You said six.
I'm sorry.
But that's okay, mayor.
Item seven.
We knew what you meant.
Thank you. Item seven, item seven is red, so, but I did have a question on this, and I asked earlier on, is, is that, what would it be as far as a number if we'd increase that transit fee to a dollar more?
And I don't have those figures. That's up to the transit. I can get an answer for that and bring it back to the next meeting as well, if that's something they would be willing to consider, is increasing those ridership costs. I do know they have a decent number for their ridership.
Okay. That was my only question there, so other than that.
So if we did, would that, would that be able to specifically reduce our portion or that just reduce their, their request?
It would probably, if they did that, I'd anticipate that we would receive a proportionate amount of that increase because our, ours is a proportionate piece of the full operation that we pay for. A lot of their funding comes from KDOT. We just operate a piece of the, the local city routes is what we, we obligate and pay for.
Yeah, my thinking was it would just offset the 14% increase, you know, if they had an increase in the, in their fees instead of going up to a 26% increase.
Big increase.
That was just my thinking on that one. So I would be okay on that one as far as what it would look like, but.
I guess I had a question on that one. If, it says it's in accordance with our agreement between, between ourselves and Finney County Transit. Is, when, when there's a 26.1% increase over last year, is that built, is that part of the agreement? I guess I was, I was questioning that.
The, the agreement speaks to us paying a proportionate percentage of their operating budget, and so they have the control to set their budget. This year, my understanding is that they're purchasing an extra vehicle replacement, a new bus, whereas usually they try to replace one every year. There's an extra unit being replaced, which is partially why that cost increase went up. But it's, it doesn't really allow the city to have a say in what that operating budget amount is, just that we pay our proportionate percentage of it. The options for the city as kind of listed out here would be to end the contract if that's something this commission decides they don't want to carry forward anymore. And we would have to notify them by July 4th to meet the 180-day deadline to terminate by the end of this year's agreement. Otherwise, the agreement renews automatically every year, and it carries on with that same percentage piece of the budget obligated by the city.
So do they have a board that sets the budget?
I believe so. I'd have to check on that 100%, but I believe it would be.
Finney County Committee on Aging is a component unit, government of Finney County. They oper, they operate the senior center, Finney County Transit, and within Finney County Transit, they have the 24-hour call-ahead service that portion their budget, which includes local funds under their taxing authority, but predominantly federal funds that are passed through the state for that specific service. We, then, then, then City Link, which began about 15 years ago, and it's a, a different federal grant passed through, through the state for fixed route transportation service versus 24-hour call-ahead service. And, and so they are administering that for Garden City. We have an agreement with them for them to administer those, to receive and administer those grant funds, deliver the service, and we're obligated to pay the percentage local match to that, to that grant, recurring annual grant for the operations of a fixed route transportation service. So the, you know, yes, they have a board, yes, they set the budget, you know, they have to provide that information to us with what their budget is for the operation of it. Jared's characterization is right. I think at this point in time, you know, our options would be, and really not probably feasible to necessarily make in, in real time today or tomorrow, which it would have to be to provide, to meet the notice deadline of this agreement. But, you know, heading into next year, it could be, do we want to operate this independent of them? I wouldn't advise that, but, or do we want to get out of the fixed route transportation game altogether and, and peel back that service and not, not deliver that service anymore? But, you know, right now, our agreement is set up such that, you know, when they have, we, we ask them to, to manage four routes, and the costs attributable to that are our responsibility to fulfill, and I think it's, it's either a 90-10 or 80-20 grant. You know, most of that's made up by the pass-through funds from the feds to the state, to, to FCCA. But it's, but it's the City of Garden City's responsibility to make up the local match.
So it's about a mil and a half that we, that we spend?
335,000, 334, yeah, $200,000 approximate mil value, a little less, 1.3.
I guess I'd like to see, I know we were, in the past, we would receive reports on kind of where they're at on transporting. I'd like to request to see that again, just, just to give us as commissioners a better idea on, on the ridership and that, where that's going. I know this is a quality of life thing for our community. It does help our citizens move throughout the community easier, but it would give us a better idea of, of making those decisions.
And I think with the investment, too, I mean, this idea that, I mean, at least reviewing their budget and, you know, talking, I mean, maybe making suggestions. I mean, I think we do, I think, you know, our, our staff has expertise in that area, and so, I mean, especially within the city limits, I mean, are there ways to, to, you know, create efficiencies or are there ways to, I mean, create, because again, this is a huge chunk of money, and then with no, no seat at the table when they're coming up with the budget, but instead just a signed agreement saying, hey, this is the money you need to turn over, so.
And speaking to history a little bit, during COVID, there was extra grant funding that went towards the, the ridership, and so our piece was diminished for a year, and then the other year, we, it was still diminished in the need, but we still were sending it to them to build up some reserves for capital purchases. And so I do think the timing of this probably speaks a little this probably speaks a little bit to that cash balance buildup over that timeframe that allowed them to eat up some of that cost without having to request more of us in those budget amounts. And that, that diminishment of those funds is probably coming to fruition in this, this spike per se. I can touch base with them on that. But because there was kind of that period of an influx of revenue from the, the grant side, it did allow them to mitigate some of that spike of capital costs that a lot of, we saw in our budget back in '21 and '22 and '23. They haven't quite spiked at the same level until now. And I think it's a catch-up of that cash balance.
Any other thoughts on that? Commissioner Nguyen or Commissioner Landgraf?
Okay. So we'll move on to item eight, which is also a red. It'll be the firefighter, two and three lieutenants for additional staff at the third fire station.
Again, I think that staff, that's Manning our, I mean, that's first responders, life safety for our community. I don't, I wouldn't want to take on the responsibility of touching that one.
Yeah, life and safety would be a touchy.
Particularly stepping up the third fire station, which are waited forever. So I think it's so close now, so.
So consensus would be to keep that. Commissioner Landgraf?
Yeah.
All right. Item number nine is a yellow. This is a general fund cash carryover from to 2025 at $3,650.00. This is an increase of $150,000 over 2023. And Jared, if you wanted to explain that a little more.
So every year, we have budgeted a cash carryover to help kind of keep an operating reserve for the general fund. We're not allowed to have an actual reserve fund. We aside money for specifically for this function. And so this amount is typically budgeted to kind of be a crisis preventer for the general fund. It's incrementally increased between 100,000 and 200,000 a year over the last 10 or 15 years to build up to the amount with the idea of it still being a proportionate percentage coverage of operating costs. With our expenses having increased fairly exponentially the last couple of years, increasing the 150,000 probably does, it's dropping it a little behind the percentage coverage that it's been in the past. So diminishing that would open the door for less coverage, percentage coverage. But this is something that is at the discretion of the commission is how much to set aside to carry forward in this budget.
And I think this is one of those items where it could be the, you know, the gello or the yellowen color. Because it kind of in conjunction goes with 10, with that being a green and nine being a yellow, which, there's some indication on that. Item number 10, that could cost, could be requested to reduce it to a lower rate versus getting rid of it all.
Yeah, that's, it was 3.5 million was what was incorporated in the last budget as a carryforward. So this is an increase over that amount. What this really does is set up your next year's budget to have a starting cash balance that doesn't go from a zero cash to then have to theoretically increase property tax or find other revenues to offset that amount of carryforward. If that was eliminated, there'd be that much more to make up in the next year's budget to keep costs and revenues equal.
And I know we've used this in the past for emergency purchases and then it's been paid back. Is that how we've used it?
We typically don't intend to use this amount. We, we keep this as a budgeted unbudgeted amount that we plan to not touch. It does absolve the general fund. If there are surprise purchases that come up that need to be incorporated, that we don't have to go make a adjusted budget to the state to adjust the general fund budget for the year because our budget authority then is increased by the 3.5 million, 3.6 million we don't intend to spend. But it has absorbed some of the, what would have been a, let's go figure out an adjustment on paper. Generally, if we've had a cost that comes up, the overall budget ends up level or lower than total cost estimate on paper because we find cost savings throughout the year in different budget lines.
So on item nine, I would start with Commissioner Nguyen on what your suggestion would be for item nine on a, on an increase or a portion of that.
Yeah, I would think a $50,000 reduction instead of the full 150.
Commissioner Andrew?
You know, this is one of those ones that really, I think Jared's, his explanation really setting up the next year's budget. I think shortchanging ourselves on this item could really create an issue when we do the next, next year's budget. So this is one I would probably keep at the full 150. But again, you know, if we're getting to that 689,000, I mean, if it's something that we have to do, that's, this is a place that you can leverage.
Commissioner Sessna?
Yeah, I was looking at either 50 or splitting it in half and making it 75,000. Just again, trying to fill that 689,000, almost $500 gap.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Sessna. Anywhere from a 50 to 75,000 reduction.
Okay. And I'm in line with Commissioner Andrew on, I like the safety net. Now, item 10, this one again is green. And if you, if you read through that, it's the, the budget currently incorporates 150,000 in 2025 to be referenced from the general fund to the capital improvement plan fund to accomplish projects in '24. So it also incorporates utilizing the projected excess revenues from the 15 cent sales tax in '25 to fund the capital improvement plan fund in the amount of 400,000. So scenarios present, presented at the June 18, 2024, commission's meeting provided information on the impact of removing this budgeted transfer. So.
So I'm going to jump in and say there's two levers here. There's a $150,000 lever and a $400,000 lever. So, I mean, obviously available to you to, there's an option to leave them both as is or cut them both all the way. But I think you can also feather each of them. Maybe that's the, I think, when you go around the horn, as you've been doing in the other ones, but you just did it in the last one. I think this is one where, okay, you know, is there a level of comfort in feathering one, the other, both? And if so, how much? And probably one of your bigger levers that you'll see through today's discussion.
And this represents the scenario chosen at the last commission meeting, which was, I believe, scenario B. There was the 300,000 budgeted in '24 as the transfer. That was removed in that scenario. So the 150,000 is a '25 transfer and the 400,000 excess revenues is a '25 value. In '24, then you would have no additional CIP revenues other than the .15 cent sales tax dollars already allocated to finish out Southeast Park with the pavilion and the bathroom. That would be the CIP project for 2024.
I don't have a good thought on this yet. If you want to come back to me.
Okay. Commissioner Andrew, you have suggestions on that?
You know, the hard thing, you know, we've, we've been kind of, we've had so many excellent projects and opportunities over the last several years. And I mean, it's, it's, again, I think this is one of our bigger level levers. And so I think the idea of, you know, part of a yellow, part of a green, I mean, I think this could be, I don't have a specific amount. I don't want to cut either one all the way. But I do think this could be the place if we needed to, to really make some, some more informed decisions, say, hey, this is really important. This is something that we can leverage dollars on because it's cheaper now. We all know that construction and equipment acquisition these days, I mean, the sooner you get it, the cheaper it is, which is sad. But that just speaks to inflation. So, and I think our reliance on sales tax that we have to really be careful. But, so, you know, I don't have a specific amount. But I mean, this is the area, I think, that we have the most opportunity to really meet that 689,500 gap. So.
Commissioner Sessna?
Yeah, I think reduce, reduce the 150,000 and then, let me, hold on, let me calculate here. So how do I put this? I'd like to leave 124,733 in the account from my other, from my other cuts in the other areas that I'll be looking at.
Can you say that number one more?
124, 124, 733. 124,733. So it takes the 150,000 off the table and it pulls out another, another four, 300 and some thousand from the 400, 400,000.
275-ish.
200, yeah.
Ish.
Okay, so a reduction of the 150, a complete reduction of the 150 and 200 and, what'd you say, 50-ish?
275.
75-ish.
Right. And, and the functionality, if you just go off the number being 550,000 is going to CIP, if we go, what does that number look like? It's kind of a three-card monte because if we send money from the general fund to the CIP fund or send money from the .15 to that, or we transfer the balance of the .15 to cover general fund expenditures, it's really kind of a circle effect. So if we just say of the 550 allocated next year, what, what do you want that number to be? It's kind of a net equal where it comes from or what the impact is because it's all going to end up in the general fund.
Right.
Or not in the general fund.
So Commissioner Sessna, of that 550, you're saying to reduce it down to 124?
Correct. There's, there's a method to my madness here. I think.
I'm going to write down 125.
425 would be the reduction.
Right, right. Well, almost 426,000 would be the reduction.
Okay.
Commissioner Landgraf?
I'm fully good with pulling both levers on this issue. I think, as much as I don't want to, I think at this point with how the budget is, we need to start looking at these projects and looking at cutting back on what we're doing there. So.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I think of the 550,000, it seems to make more sense to me to possibly not pull as hard, but going around half of that would make some sense to me. But it might also be helpful for me to kind of tangibly see, like, to itemize that 550 to see, well, this is what the intended CIP projects are and then kind of reduce that down to be able to see what projects can postpone for me to visually see that.
And that would be on those scenarios presented last week, have that priority list. Whatever the dollar amount brought in is going to hit those priority projects in the order they appeared on the page.
Okay.
Yeah, I would kind of be in the same boat as Commissioner Andrew as far as, I don't know what a number would look like, but maybe presenting those numbers that were discussed from other commissioners might help.
So there's been 275, 550, and 426 presented. Which number would you like us to utilize for our quick math to give you at the end?
Say those numbers again.
Commissioner Nguyen said half would be 275,000. Commissioner Landgraf said 550,000. And Commissioner Sessna said 426,000. Reduction on each of those.
I would, I would defer to the 275.
Yeah, 275 or 300,000. That way you'd have a, yeah, I'm not saying it's a estimate of everything, but I think it's closer. So if you do 300,000.
Is that all on item 10? Any other questions? Okay. Item 11, this is also a green, increase of 750,000 to the budget of the general fund for street rehabilitation projects identified by PEC. Commissioner Nguyen, you want to?
This is really difficult for me because we definitely need the street rehabilitation projects. Because at the pre-meeting, if I remember correctly, we were at six-year improvement plan and here eight-year improvement to kind of stretch out to be a little bit more palatable for us. I guess even if that 750,000 went lower to maybe 500,000?
Okay. Commissioner Andrew?
We need to go the other way, like start the other way a couple of times. So, okay. Well, so, so this is the, I think, you know, we pay these big dollars to have these people come in and tell us how to make sure that we keep, you know, city streets are essentials. And so, and I mean, I think, you know, Commissioner Nguyen talked about the six-year or the eight-year. And I think we've already concerted the eight-year, you know, the stretched agreement to make these work. But this is one of those things that if you don't pay now, you're going to pay much more later. And so I really, this is one of those ones, I mean, I know it's not red, but this is one of those ones for me that, I mean, if we don't continue to keep our current streets up while we're adding streets, then I think that in the end, we're going to end up in a, in a year where we're going to have to overly spend. And this, this might be one of those, you know, where there is an emergency. And I know that, that we've talked about having the water department pay, like when there's water breaks and things like that. Right now, all that money comes out of the street, or the street department. So I think there are ways, but again, it's, it's the same amount of money. But I do think that if we decrease, if we don't start taking care of our streets now, which we already, they're already expensive, I really think in the end, we're going to cost ourselves more money. So I'm, you know, the $750,000 is already a diminished amount. I can't remember where they recommended a million dollars a year to.
Two million dollars?
Between two and two and a half.
Wow, yeah, that's a lot. So, you know, the 750,000, I mean, that's going to kind of touch and get things started. But I would really hate to cut this one at all. So.
Okay. Commissioner Sessna?
Yeah, streets are important to our community. I, I looked at this one and I'm in favor of reducing the current, where we're at at 750,000 and taking it down to $700,000 just because we need to maintain our streets in our community. So there's a $50,000 savings there. So instead of increase up to 750, it would be at 700,000. Got it? Jared?
Got it.
Okay.
Commissioner Landgraf?
I would be open to reducing it down to 500,000, but no more lower than that. I think streets are important. I think this is something that needs to be done. But I think with the budget, it might be something we have to look towards cutting. So lowering it down to, I just want to make sure 500,000 even is what I'm saying.
So just clarification, everybody, I mean, everybody's, they're reducing the increase to this amount.
Correct.
Yep. Sorry, I'm not speaking in the mic. Reducing the amount to the 500 or 700, 750 or 500. I'm just clarifying that. So I would be okay with, yeah, I mean, I'd be okay with leaving it where it's at. Because, I mean, we do have a lot of traffic. We do have, I mean, I appreciate the offer of it being green just to give us the opportunity to make an adjustment. After seeing the report and the presentations of how much miles of roads that we have in Garden City that need to be up kept every year and years after, it's not a one-time and done. It's, it's a reoccurring, you know, maintenance plan. So I could, I could see it staying where it's at.
Okay.
Item 12, this would be the transfer from the general fund to recreations, to the recreation reserve of 50,000 to build up for future capital projects. So.
I'll start on this side.
Yeah, we'll go to this one.
I'll give, I'll give Commissioner Andrew a break on this one. I'll start on this section. I was looking at this one. I know it's, we're building a reserve. So I would look at cutting this in half and putting in 25,000 instead of the 50,000. I still, again, it's, it's a reserve for our recreation department. I think we need reserves for all of our departments. But because we're trying to fill this, this hole, I think, again, it's still putting funding towards it, but not as much.
I'm, I may go ahead and go, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Sessna. I'd like to see it reduced by 25,000. I understand it is a rainy day fund, but currently with the general fund, I think cutting that back and bringing it back to the general fund would be important. So.
And I also would, would, wouldn't mind seeing that as a reduction to 25,000.
25, and if we need even 20.
25 or 20 for.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd hate to limit it entirely because I, again, I think this idea that this is still important and I, you know, we do want to keep our different. still important and I, you know, we do want to keep our different places up and after seeing the presentation in the parks, which I didn't realize how expensive that, that was a shocker. Anyway, but so, yeah, the 25,000, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Item 13, general fund, social funding line accounts for the art grant and community grant funds.
I'll start again.
Commissioner Sessna?
Just to give Commissioner Andrew a break from being first, or Commissioner Nguyen, I guess. I looked at this fund. Again, I would reduce the, the whole amount of 46,500. Again, I understand it's, it's going for a quality of life thing, but when we're trying to fill 689,000, this, this is, we need to look at these numbers hard, so I would reduce that down to zero. But again, when we start getting additional funding in the future, we could go back and look at this and refill that pot in the future when we get out of this, this need for funding.
Okay. Commissioner Landra?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Sessna on this. I'm fine with reducing entirely, but then once we do end up having additional budget to go towards this and then putting it towards this fund as well.
Okay.
I would like to see this as a reduction as well, but down to a 25,000, just 25,000 even. Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah, I think one of our goals this year is to create environment, an artistic environment for Garden City, not just for the sake of beauty, but for the, the younger people. I'm not very inclined to reduce it all the way, but a reduction of 40 to 30,000 is up my alley.
Forty to 30?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Andrew?
Yeah, I think that if, so I, I mean, I agree, this is a lever we could pull. The unfortunate thing is when you eliminate these kind of things, they rarely have ever come back. So, I mean, eliminate it altogether, it's just something that's not on our radar and you think about. So, I mean, I think the 20, 25,000, 30,000, but I, I do think it needs to be reduced just so that, I think there's a lot can be done still. So I'm okay with reducing it down.
Okay. 20 to 25? All right. Item number 14, the city allocated 200,000 for downtown development grants in the 24 budget. Thus, 74,129 of those funds have been expensed to eligible grant recipients in 25, leaving 125, which is in the remaining funds, which with the approval of these items that were on the agenda today.
The balance is 67,678.60.
Got reduced to 67,678?
60.
668?
No, 670, 67,000, 67, 68. Now you got me doing it, Mayor.
Oh, okay, 60 cents. I didn't lose, okay. I, I was rounding.
You were rounding.
There's my reduction there. No. So item 14 would be of that amount to be discussed, so Commissioner Sessna?
I would, on this one, I would eliminate the 67,678.60 that's remaining in that account. I know there's probably other applications out there, but currently as it stands, I keep going back. We still have to fill a 689,000, 445,000 gap, so that'll help, help to fill that. But in the future, I know this is a very important fund. It's really helped our, our retail downtown, but again, we're, we're looking at filling a huge hole.
Commissioner Landra?
I'm good with reducing entirely as well. I think it's a great fund, and I think it's a fund that we could look towards bringing back in the future, but currently with the budget, we need to look at cuts, so.
I'll come back to myself. Commissioner Nguyen?
I think that the remaining balance is also investment to bring more people downtown and thus doing so heightens our sales tax. So I am inclined to keep it where it is.
Commissioner Andrew?
Yeah, so for several years, this kind of set where no one really used it, and now this year, it seems like it's, there's a revitalization, so. You know, I'm, I don't know. I, I mean, I think if we don't fund anymore, but we keep the balance, you know, and use that, then basically we leave it set until we can have a better budget year. I don't want to say the amount because I, I don't think I could, but.
Thought I'd just say keep? Keep it as it is?
Well, just keep those current amounts. We're not going to add additional, anything additional, but, I mean, we still have that still in the fund and then basically delete that. So not build it back up to 200,000, so.
Okay.
My thought on that one was just because there are people using that fund and it's, it's there for the community. I mean, it, it's there for their use to improve their facilities or buildings to bring people into the community of something, come in and see something nice. I would agree with, with you on just leaving it where it's at, be, not, not reducing it.
They used to have other funds that they could use, like WWI funds, or I can't remember what it stands for anymore.
WW, that was.
Yeah. But they, they used to have other funds, but I mean, I've never really heard about any additional, I mean Downtown Visions or these downtown organizations, I'd have not heard. I mean, hopefully they're, they're joining with the, with what we just paid for Great Plains and then also, you know, the, some of the other Network Kansas. But I mean, to me, hopefully that, that, I know that Downtown Vision really has to be kind of the go-between with those two, so hopefully she really gets involved with Great Plains.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Jared, you get on that one? Matt?
Yeah. Yep.
All right. So that completes the 14 items. We'll jump into the revenues of the city, typical taxes and revenues. So item number one and number two are red. Are there any indications of moving any direction on those?
No, I do want to say I appreciate that, the conservative nature of the estimations because I'll tell you, with, with sales tax, especially with inflation up and all of those, I just, it's one of those when dollars get tight, you know, people are going to spend less. And so I don't think we have a lot of things that aren't necessities, but I mean, I just want to be really careful. I want, I really appreciate your staff really being conservative in their estimates because I think we could really sink ourselves, especially considering that this is a huge part of what we consider our budget, so.
I agree, they're both red. I, I'm, again, it was ill-advised to probably make any changes to those two items.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm in agreement, Matt.
All right. So we'll go down to the unbudgeted considerations. There's three, four items in this one. So the first one being the general fund budget currently incorporates 30,000 for park improvements in 25. Is there any discussion on that reduction or increase for that? Commissioner Sessna?
They're all unbudgeted. I would say not funding one through four on any of them, just because, one, they're unbudgeted, and two, we're trying to fill a 689,000, 445,000 hole in our budget.
Commissioner Landra?
I'm good with leaving out unbudgeted items one through four. I'd be open to unbudgeted item two, just at the amount of being able to participate in the career fair. I believe that's about 2,000 ish? 5,000?
I thought it was five, but I can't.
I want to say it's.
It's like 500 dollars a table.
Oh, okay.
I think there was, it was like a corporate thing of 2,500, corporate sponsor of like 2,500.
Yeah, I'd be open to that, but everything else, I'd be fine leaving out.
I'm okay with the not adding any of these, other than the number one, parks, parks improvements. I think that would still be a benefit for the community as far as what we need to get updated in some of our equipments being 70 years old. That would obviously want, I, in my opinion, that one would stay. The other two, three, and four items could, could come out.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah, I don't think we should add these to the budget.
Yeah, if we need the 30, I mean, if we need the 30,000 to make our budget, then I say we eliminate it. If we don't, that's the one thing I would like to keep. The other, the other three, two, three, and four, I'd say we cut.
And I'll just make a note, the 30,000 isn't one of the recommended expense cuts. It was if the commission after that pre-meeting wanted to add more funding to that line.
Right.
So rather than be an expense cut of the 30,000 already budgeted, the recommendation was if you wanted to consider additional funds allocated towards that purpose.
Okay. So that, so that would put us back down into the alternatives. Matt and Jared, do you have enough information to go as?
So I'll, I'll do a quick review if you'd like of what I've tallied. From expense number four, which was the downtown vision request to cut 4,300. From expense nine, which was the ash carry forward to cut 50,000. From expense 10, which is the CIP transfers to cut 275,000. From expense 11, which is the road project to cut 50,000. From expense 12, which is the rec reserve, 25,000. Expense 13, which is the social funding to cut 21,500 or go down to that 25,000 level. With those combined, you're at 425,800 of budget elimination.
So I took a different twist on number 10, 11, and 13. I took the average of the recommended drop, which I don't know that that's.
Right.
Like the right math. I'm just a different lens to kind of look at, look through it, where I think you were probably a little bit more focused on the majority.
The low number.
Yeah. The, you know, if you averaged out the amount down, that would be 365 on number 10. I did something similar on 11, which I, I counted the two noses zero. The two 250s, obviously at 250, and the 50 at 50. And the average of that, it came out to 110 versus the 50. So I think the interpretation of 10 and 11 could be adjusted to make the number a little bit higher. You're still not all the way to the finish line. I also had, I did the same thing to 13, and it was 25,000 instead of 21,500. I also included the 4,304 and the, and arbitrary 3,000 cut to line item six. Folks didn't necessarily say a number there, but I felt like there was a little bit of a sentiment to.
I guess.
Grab something there.
Was our goal to actually meet the 689,445?
Ideally.
If it could be accomplished.
Yeah, if, if not.
We didn't want to limit your expectations. Yeah, but we, we can go to the next meeting, but if you were there at this meeting, we can publish.
The, the intent on our part is to, with the guidance you've given, I could create scenarios with those that have been multiple suggestions of a value offered, but I would come back to the next meeting with, the recommendation was 500, 275, or 426, which would you like to do, or a blend of the mix? And I would show the delta of what you still need to get to. If you'd rather hash that out and like have a conversation today, you could still, at the end of today's meeting, if you wanted to say, look, this is our target, we're going to keep a flat mill levy like you've indicated, we could publish that to the county, let them know that's our intent. And you could come back later and accomplish the details of how to get there. But whether it happens today or happens next time, the conversation will likely be the same conversation.
Okay.
So we're 200,000 off from, based on your total, what was the?
I've got 582, 300 as the reduction, and I need to get to 689, so about 100, 105,000 away.
So is that, is that an average? Or, I guess, how, how did you get to that?
Yeah, he's taking.
So I, I think we used, I think we used the same interpretation on all of them except for three.
Okay.
And I did, on 10, 11, and 13, I heard you all give a number, or you gave a range.
Okay.
If you gave, most of them were numbers, and I just averaged the numbers. On 13, a couple commissioners gave a range, I think Commissioner Nguyen gave 6 to 16,000 decrease. So I picked the mean of those two numbers at 11. And then I think Commissioner, it was Commissioner Andrew that said 20, 25, or 30. And so I picked 25,000. And I think, yeah, I interpreted that as where you, you would leave it. And so the, yeah.
Decreased to 16,000.
But I don't necessarily think that's the right way to look at it. That's just the way I was interpreting it. And I, where I think Jared was looking for maybe.
The least pain?
The three.
Yeah.
Well, or kind of, kind of three yeses rather than averaging out the consensus.
So because after, I mean, I, I worked it out to get to the 689,445 with my, with what I came up with, when I, when I went through this, I tried to get it down to that.
Yeah, we get that. We're listening to all five of you.
No, I get it.
So in essence, the, the ones that a consensus was picked are the same for Matt and I. If you want to go back and decide if there's more of the lever to pull or less of a lever to pull, it would be item for expenses 10, 11, and 13. And then 14, there was one recommendation to cut it, and the others were to not necessarily cut it, and so.
Two recommendations to cut.
Two recommendations to cut.
But not a consensus.
But not a.
Right.
Yeah, I left that at zero since there were three zeros.
And expense nine, there was a 50,000 or a 75,000. So there's, if you'd like me just to go through and remind you of which one had two different values offered, and you guys come up with a consensus number, we can recalculate the math and see what that gets you.
It's just three items. I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Which one you want to start with?
Let's start with 10.
10?
So we might remind the commissioners the numbers that they had thrown out.
The recommendations provided were to cut it by 426,000, to cut it by the full amount of 550,000, and to cut it by 275,000. If you go with Matt's math of the average, it would be a reduction of 365,000 from the 550. Which leaves 185,000.
That we still need to cut?
That would be what's available.
Oh, okay.
Your total, with Matt's total, I believe, is 110,145 still needing to be cut.
Is that much?
I think.
That works for me.
Something close to that, yeah.
So I guess the question would be, of the remaining 185,000 based off the math, is there any further reduction welcomed by the commission?
On number 10?
Number 10 line.
I think going down to 275 would get us closer.
Well, 185 is what's remaining.
So it's getting reduced by four, five, three?
365.
365.
Yep. So how much of the 185 remaining would you like to reduce?
Or not?
Or not?
Or are you not comfortable with 365? Three of you gave numbers less than that. Two of you gave numbers more near to.
I'd say more near to 200,000. That's mine. Keeping, keeping 200,000 in, that's, that's mine.
I guess I'll go back. Is it the consensus of the commission and, well, okay.
And that's why we're, that's why we went back to this item to see if we can give them the actual numbers.
Well, you know, you, you talked about eliminating the 150,000, the transfer. So, I mean, to me, I thought that was reasonable. You know, and so then that leaves us talking about the 400,000. I mean, if that's still something that you'd want to do, I mean, I can see the value in doing that, and then maybe talk of the 400,000, and maybe that's where we do a significant reduction, so.
Already, yeah.
Well, not making the transfer because like Jared said, it's kind of transferring money and all over. And so that got, so, I mean, I think if we leave 200,000, out of the 550,000, if we leave 200,000.
Yeah.
And then that's, and however you have to do it, if you eliminate the transfer, you And then that's, and however you have to do it, if you eliminate the transfer, you cut the 200,000.
That still leaves us 100. That puts you 15,000 the other direction, back towards final.
Well, the only thing I'd say, that number nine, we didn't talk about, but I mean, I do think even though I do like the 150,000, but again, that's going to be the next year's budget year that we'll have to deal with. But I would be in favor of cutting it to the 75,000. I mean, that was one that I was kind of, wasn't sure of, but that was something that, I mean, I think the arguments of the commission, other commissioners that have talked about, I mean, I think we're still making a transfer, we just wouldn't be making as much, so.
We both have that marked as a $50,000 reduction based on the commission's comments.
You got something to say, Commissioner Sessna?
Well, I was just going to say, is it still the consensus of the commission? I know we're, we're, we're working on this, but is it still the consensus of the commission to have a flat mill levy? I mean, we kind of agreed upon that before we started this whole thing, but is it still, after kind of going through this, is this still the consensus of the commission to have a flat mill levy?
I'll go ahead and go first for myself, yes. I think the taxpayers at this point have been burdened heavily enough with the high rising home valuations currently, so I don't see any, I would not support anything raising the mill levy personally.
Yeah, I'd also like to keep the mill levy flat.
I mean, I'm just asking, I mean, because if we're going to keep it flat, we need to adjust it by the 689,445.
Well, then I propose we make that, and number 11, we make that kind of our, the, the factor that really kind of brings it back into the budget. I mean, it's, we haven't spent it before. I mean, you know, we do know that it's still important. I mean, I mean, half a million dollars, I don't know how much, where that goes, but at least it gets it started. But, so I guess it's really, I mean, I know two commissioners recommended, you know, half a million or $500,000, you know, in cutting that. And so that's 150,000. I think we're $15,000 off and I'm sure we can figure.
Yeah, I think if you, if you took your number 10, I added it a $365,000 reduction. If it went to a $350,000 reduction. And then your number 11 went to a $250,000 reduction, leaving a balance of 500 in that. And that leaves a balance of 200 in the combined levers of number 10. However, those would get dispersed. I think your math is, is there.
Yeah.
It's plus or minus a few thousand dollars and we could, we could get there. But I think in that, the, I think reviewing the numbers, I would say number four is a reduction of 4,300. Number six, I would recommend no change. Let us figure that out. If we need to discuss that, that's money ahead going into the creation of your 26 budget. I don't know that that is going to change the axis of the earth at this point, but it is worth investigating if they're carrying a cash balance or not. So, you know, one through three, no change. Five, six, seven, eight, no change. Number four, a reduction in 4,300, which leaves the level at the 20, 2024 level. Nine is a $50,000 reduction. 10 is a $350,000 reduction. 11 becomes a $250,000 reduction. 12 is a $25,000 reduction. 13 is a $25,000 reduction. 14, no change. One and two, no change. No funding for unidentified budget requests, one, two, three and four. Or identified, unfunded, but identified but unfunded budget requests, one, two, three and four. That would be 300, 650, 700. 700, 4,300. Which gets you to a flat mill levy rate and we could just put the differential in order to achieve that flat mill levy rate, put the differential back into the.
One of these areas.
One of these areas. Maybe the one that, that number, Commissioner Andrew suggested, the number 11 was kind of the balancing number one. Instead of a 250,000 reduction, it's kind of a 235. 235, yeah. And I think we need to leave a little bit wiggle room that, you know, there's a projected mill levy rate. You still don't know that until final valuations are in on the fall. You know, leaving yourself a little bit of room that, you know, it might end up being slightly down, but you leave yourself a little wiggle room so that you do, in fact, when the valuations are finalized, you have published as close to a flat mill as possible. Is Commissioner comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think we're pretty close to get to that. So.
So you don't need to know today specifically what these line items are in the budget. You need to know what your, you need to, it's kind of like a one, you know, one, one fill in the blank sort of publication or notice that we provide to the county, county clerk. So if you're comfortable with publishing a intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate with a mill levy that would be flat to 2024, then I think Jared knows what he needs to do. We can send that off after this meeting and then you still have a, another month, month and a half before you have to finalize your budget. So these line items can shake out a little bit. We can fine tune those a little bit more. We'll operate, you've got a pathway to level.
Yes. At least we've got to start. Let's put it that way.
Good work.
You have successfully identified the path for staff to put together for you.
Yep. Mayor, I authorize you to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify the mill levy of 38.492 mills to be included on the publication sent to the citizens. Second.
So that was the intent to exceed?
Yes.
You have, yeah, the revenue, you have to.
The state sets a, the state sets a rate, but we, we, we as home rule set our own mill levy rate and that usually exceeds what the state comes up with. So we have to make a motion to exceed that. The mayor signs that, sends it to the state.
We can't go above that.
But we can't go.
After we publish it.
Right. We can go below it, but we cannot go above it once we publish it.
Okay. It's been a motion and a second and any further discussion? I would just like to make a comment. I mean, I know we're a forward-thinking community. I appreciate all of the work and stress that went into this. I know it's a hard decision and I suspect many people watch and kind of notice our hesitation on some of the line items in today's agenda. So if you see that, this budget is one that, that we were kind of on our toes with. And so I just would like to say, continue that forward thinking, look into what Garden City can be and can become. With that, I know the, you know, the decision to go up or stay flat is a big one in the future with sales tax and things that we can adjust, keeping in mind those falling off in 10, nine years or so. We've got other tools that could be utilized to kind of offset some, some property tax and things like that. So, yeah, appreciate all the hard work. Commissioners, thank you for your input as well. Matt, Jared, appreciate all of the work. And so I don't have any other comments with that.
Again, as I prefaced before, I'd just like to thank staff for all their hard work in getting the budget prepared for us. I know it was really tough this year, especially cutting out 2 million and then giving it to us to get down to that flat mill levy rate. But I think as we did today, we've, we've accomplished that and, you know, the future's bright ahead. We just have to get through this year or two where we'll have tight budgets, but the community's on the right track.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 12F is an executive session. We don't anticipate any action following that executive session. So if the commission would like, we'll take up the consent agenda and then commission reports. And at that point in time, we can shut down the broadcast and conclude with the executive session. So if the commission doesn't want to remove either of the two items, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items 13A and B.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items 13A and 13B.
Second.
It's been motion and second and any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Okay. Item 12F, who does, who needs to be in this?
Do you want to do commission reports first, Mayor?
Oh, okay, sure.
And then we'll finish up with the executive session.
We'll start with Commissioner Andrew.
So this past weekend, I did get a chance to go out to the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool. Now, that one slide does grab you a little bit, so I told some people I was with that didn't, and then so I had to recant. But they still had a good time going down. You know, the one thing I love about the investment, I think this was a huge investment in our community and, and I'm so grateful we did it when we did because it's almost half price. But the thing that's really neat about it is just seeing how many people are using and utilizing not only that, but we drove through the park and then we went to the zoo. And I really appreciate just the job that our, that the city and the city maintenance and the staff and everyone takes just the pride in the city. It makes a huge difference. But as you drive through, seeing just all the different people who are using and utilizing those, so that was really exciting. I did want to make sure, so I don't forget, you know, that revenue neutral rate, I know that the legislature took it up and I don't know if there's anything else we can do to push them to, that's, it's unnecessary. I think we can handle our own affairs, but I didn't know if there's how that goes and so that might be something you send out, so I don't forget that. And I did want to say thank you to all, I mean, you know, people did so excellent. I know that fireworks could be sold on the 27th, but I mean, you know what, last night was the first night and so I really appreciate that. I know we're coming up to the celebration not only of Independence Day, but also this idea of what was paid for. And so hopefully, if you've not had a chance, we recently walked through the cemetery and I'm going to tell you, it is honoring to see how many veterans, the Veterans Memorial, we have several of them within the cemetery, but they are really, they really make a difference. And it just reminds me of the price it was actually paid. I was really excited to see the downtown development fund being used. It seemed like it sat, just kind of like sat there for many years and nothing been happening, but I was really excited about that. And my final thing is I want to talk about, congratulations to Seeland. That is quite an accomplishment. That's a, hey, it's a big deal. So we really appreciate that. All the work you've done and I know it really brings city clerks up to a level. You know, these are people that do a lot of behind the scenes work and now that you're taking on extra duties, which I didn't realize with all the signs and all of that, so that's kind of exciting. But I really appreciate that, you know, you are willing to serve. I know it's a lot of, a lot of extra time and it's a lot of just responsibility. So I want to congratulate Seeland. And also Chief Pruitt of all of the cities, I mean, being one of the 911 coordinators, council to representing, I'll tell you, that makes a huge difference and it really puts not only Garden City on the map, but also really the western Kansas, because we really need people to advocate as we're sending funds back from the CBGD fund or whatever that was, as we're sending back money back to the state, you know, really to have that representation from the western half of the state makes a huge difference. So I just wanted to say thank you to both of you for serving. I know it's time away from your other jobs and that work doesn't stop when you're gone, but I just want to say thank you for doing that. And my final thing, forgot, flew out of the airport, the jet bridge was absolutely incredible. I mean, I didn't think I'd enjoy it as much as I did, but I was, yeah, it was wonderful. The day was a little bit windy and so, I mean, and they talked about rain, but I mean, now this year could be that way. But flying out of Garden City and it was, the experience was absolutely amazing. So I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity that the airport took and jumped ahead in doing all of those things and we have an incredible asset for our community. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sessna?
Yeah, I'd like to also congratulate Chief Pruitt and Seeland on their state and national commitments on serving on those boards. Helps to give a voice from our, our perspective here in Garden City. Fireworks are allowed to be discharged from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM this week in the city and also the county yesterday recently approved, well, yesterday approved having fireworks discharged out in the county because of the rains that we've had. Just be safe and please be mindful of those hours and of our citizens and in the community. A lot of things happening in the community on the fourth. Parade starts at 10 o'clock on Main Street. Garden Rapids at the Big Pool is open from 1 to 6. Garden City Wind Game starts at 3:35 at Clint Naitner. Municipal band performs at 8 o'clock at Lee Richardson Zoo. And then the fireworks start around 10 o'clock down at the fairgrounds. I did attend the Downtown Vision's 20th anniversary celebration. Great celebration, really cool venue. Ribbon cutting for the new terminal at the Garden City Regional Airport. We're at a great front door for our community. Just fantastic. I also attended the 620 event at Stevens Park, which seemed to be really well-attended by our citizens. So another great example of where our staff is kind of thinking outside the box and providing another way of engaging with our community. Worked with the mayor, city staff and members of the county on the new Neighborhood Development Services Agreement. Attended an educational opportunities meeting for our area. I also attended a number of presentations on the sales tax extension vote for our community. There will be a candidate meet and greet at the Clarion at 6 o'clock on July 11th. The last day to register to vote in the primary election is July 16th. Also wanted to mention that the League of Kansas Municipalities will be holding a League City Forum event on July 10th in Scott City. These are informative sessions that'll feature an open discussion amongst elected officials in the area. So if you would like to go, registration deadline is today. Just get on the league website and sign up for that. I know Seeland sent out an email too, to commissioners on that. But league staff will be on hand to answer any questions on that event. And it really includes a great opportunity for elected officials to network in our area as well. My final thought is just remember, stay safe on this July 4th and shop local and fly local. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessna, for giving my report.
You're welcome.
Also.
Yeah.
Commissioner Landgraf.
So I can repeat what Commissioner Ortiz said, because I had an entire thing written up and Commissioner Sessna went through every single bullet point. But I was able to as well go to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the airport for the new terminal. It really truly does look amazing. It was an honor having Senator Moran there as well to speak about it as well. So that event is just a lovely event to have. I think there's probably, I bet probably 100 people there, 500.
Yeah, for sure.
At least.
At least. Also, congrats to Chief Pruitt and to Seeland. It's great having both of you on both of those respective organizations. It's great having a voice from Garden City there as well. And also I just want to wish everyone a happy Independence Day and to be safe on the 4th of July. And if you are looking for something to do, they do have it listed on the Garden City City Facebook, just a list of events. So it really is a great resource to use, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nguyen?
First, congratulations to Chief Pruitt and Seeland for their representation, but also to Officer Bracken Ralston for completing basic training. We grew up together and it's so, such a joy to see both of us in public service. Also, July is Parks and Recreation Month, so be on the lookout, check the Parks and Rec website for signup deadlines. And just a wonderful, wonderful execution for 620 Day. So many positive comments and all the photos was such a good way to just smell the roses of Garden City, how we can become a melting pot that is so excited to be here. Also, keep your eyes out for the candidate forums and meet and greets for this upcoming election season, but also importantly, to take an active participation in the sales tax reauthorization. It can get kind of confusing and it may. and it may seem, all these moment jumbo coffee shops, talks that may seem out of place, but all of the city staff, all the commissioners are available to answer all the questions because it is so necessary for us to reauthorize that sales tax. And then lastly, the past two weeks, I have had such a joy being in Lakin and Fowler with about 80 high school kids, painting houses, pulling weeds, but just for them to get outside, smell the fresh air and serving, there's quite a few from Garden City, not just serving where they live, but the extended backyard that they're in. And within that, I just by chance met with a few Fowler city councilmen and just how they are ringing a lot of cymbals and bells for how well Garden City is doing, not only just things that they want to model to. Yep.
Thank you. I won't say everything. I'll just kind of scratch off as I go, it was repeated, but there are a few items on my list that didn't get talked about, so I'll have my opportunity. But no, first of all, thank you to fellow commissioners, staff at, you know, Jennifer, thanks for your work as well, just everybody's involvement in today's discussion. I know it's, it's a lot of work outside from your families to do this, to get up here and spend time on, on a lot of this material. So thank you for your work, your hard work and your dedication. Voter turnout as well, that, yeah, if you're not registered to vote, please, please do so. That's a, if you want to play a big part of the community, that's, that's a way to do it. We've been very busy this past couple weeks, so leading up to this, you know, this commission, but there's been a lot of things done, a lot of good things happening, a lot of just praise in the community. So I'd like to start off with just my start of the week. I did plan to be out there at the airport for the, you know, with, with the announcement of the ribbon cutting and ceremony and things, but I had other plans. My, my granddaughter was born on, on Tuesday, the 25th, so four pounds, or six pounds, 11 ounces, and her name is Everly Lane Ortiz. So proud grandpa that sits up here today, naming her today on, live on TV or YouTube or wherever we're at, so, but good opportunity for me to do that. But I'm blessed, I'm humbled, I'm honored to be in Garden City and being up here to talk about all the great things. We did have our first ever softball tournament called Home Runs for Heroes event this Saturday and Sunday. It didn't happen on Sunday because of the rain, but we, we had 22 teams come in from Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, and Colorado, and every single person you ran into was thankful that we had this opportunity to host a tournament so that they were able to come to and have fun. Appreciate the fire department coming out to spray water on the, one of the outfield's out there. That was amazing. Just, there's never, there's not a tournament that we've been to that's done that before. Sheriff Department came out and gave stickers to the kids that were just, you know, running around and they got to, you know, turn the lights on to their little track four wheeler and it was, it was amazing to see those kids just with a big smile on their face. Police Department came out, Chief Pruitt was out there with the Bearcat, is that what it was? And those kids were crawling all over inside that thing. It was amazing to watch. So appreciate those heroes of our community going out and supporting the, the future and youth of our community that love to play sports and love to just showcase their talent. So thank you to those who showed up, all of the people who came out and supported, the food trucks that were out there. It was just a blast. And we were, we were in awe as far as the board members of the Red Hawk Academy that they were able to pull this off and they're, they're humbled and blessed as well. So we appreciate the community's support in that. I also like to just mention that the neighborhood agreement with the county was well, it was well received and well inputted. Happy to see that that's moving forward with an agreement here soon. Also, the parade, I will be in that. If there's any other commissioners, I have a, I have, do I have one extra seat, Seeland?
You have a total of three people going, you and two other commissioners.
Okay, so I have, I can, is it me driving?
You're walking.
I'm walking?
Just kidding.
I can walk.
It's your car, so you can drive.
Okay, it's my father-in-law's car, so I'll drive it, but there's, there's two other commissioners that are going and there's feet for one more if anyone likes, would like to go. So the parade at 10 o'clock a.m., 4th of July. So I did bring up a question to Matt about the Dusty Trail. They are looking into that. We'll probably hear a report back on the next, not, well, whenever you guys get the information.
We in a position to give an update at this meeting? Looks like we might be, if you want one, Mayor.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so we've done quite a bit of research on, on the Dusty Trail. I spoke to the owner this morning. They're still in litigation with the insurance company. They did have some negotiations, which he thought was an improvement since they weren't able to get anything happening or moving. But no, he wants it as wrapped up as much as anyone, but he's going to send a crew to do some cleanup, make sure it's still secure, take care of any kind of weeds and other substances. No, still active on it. On the legal side, I've, we've spoke with legal, we've gone through some other potential options, which do have a budget item with those if we choose to go down the road, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. All right, so I guess that'd be the conclusion of our report. So if we wanted to jump back to the item of executive session.
And the specific purpose is to discuss, Jennifer? The executive session, the specific purpose would be?
For attorney-client privilege related to contract.
Okay.
For?
For liability related to contract negotiations.
How long?
Oh, sorry. Probably, yes.
Okay.
15 minutes?
No, we don't need that long. I would say probably 10 minutes.
Yeah, 10.
10 minutes, yeah.
Which is Jennifer, nice.
Anybody need a break?
Yes, we do.
We'll give about a, we can go at 3:40.
Yeah.
You get about four minutes.
Wow.
Six minutes.
Can we go 3:45?
Yeah, let's do 3:45.
Yeah, just.
Mayor, move, we go into executive session pursuant to KS A75-4319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged, an attorney-client relationship related to contract, beginning at 3:45 and lasting for 40, sorry, for 10 minutes with city manager Matt Allen.
And legal counsel.
And Jennifer Cunningham.
Second.
Today's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
All right, and communications team can shut down the broadcast at this point.
Yeah, because we also have the, we also have the contract that goes with it. So we'll sign the, we'll sign that as part of it.